Hello everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order. I want to thank you all for coming. A few less people than we've had in the past couple of years. We're just a little nervous. I don't know if this is a function of the good work that the Board is doing or maybe it's the fact that this is the first day in about a week we've had an opportunity to mow our lawns. So I'll do my best to move the meeting along. If we could first please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, with which we stand on a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. A couple of things I wanted to mention. Hopefully you all got coffee of the annual district budget before. I'd like to make mention that we're probably five or six pages into here. We do have a page that talks about the budget validation process and about how this meeting will be conducted. I know some folks in the past who come to these budget meetings weren't necessarily sure about when they can speak, when they couldn't speak. Hopefully this page will explain that. The other thing I wanted to mention is that as you know, this is a two-part validation process. We will vote on a budget here this evening and then in a week's time we'll be voting at your regular polling place. Just to be clear, that process is something that's mandated by the state. But this year, and this is a state requirement, there will be two questions at the poll. One question will allow you to either vote up or down the budget and the other question is asked, do you want to continue with the two-part process? If we did not continue with the two-part validation process, then the budget meeting would just be this meeting. So again, that is mandated by the state's requirement that be added to the ballot. All right, I have some official remarks here. As directed, I Timothy Harkins, Chairperson of the RSU One Board of Directors and resident of the town of Arusik in the county of Sagahawak and state of Maine, have sworn to notify the inhabitants of Arusik, Bath, Pittsburgh, West Bath, Woolwich, who are qualified by all to vote in town fairs to assemble at this time and place for the purpose of acting on the articles listed in the warrant dated on the 28th day of May in the year 2013. Attested copies of the warrant were posted on May 7, 2013. Attested copies of the warrant were posted at Bath City Hall, Paton Free Library, Bath Fire Station, Sagahawak County Court House, Bath Police Station, and Bath Middle School, all being public in conspicuous places in the city of Bath and being at least seven days prior to the budget meeting. Attested copies of the warrant were also posted at the Arusik Town Hall and Arusik Fire Station, all being public in conspicuous places in the town of Arusik and being at least seven days prior to the budget meeting. Attested copies of the warrant were also posted at the Pittsburgh Town Hall, Post Office at Drumore, Post Office at Sevastopol, Pine Tree Service Center, Pittsburgh Elementary School, and Business Center Store, all being public in conspicuous places in the town of Pittsburgh and being at least seven days prior to the budget meeting. Attested copies of the warrant were also posted at the West Bath Town Hall, West Bath Fire Station, West Bath School, and New Meadows Market, all being public in conspicuous places in the town of West Bath and being at least seven days prior to the budget meeting. Attested copies of the warrant were also posted at the Woolwich Town Hall, Woolwich Post Office, and Woolwich Central School, all being public in conspicuous places in the town of Woolwich and being at least seven days prior to the budget meeting. Okay, so we will move on to Article 1A, to choose moderator to preside at this meeting. Is there a nomination for a moderator? You have a nomination?
John G. Morse.
John G. Morse has been nominated. Is there a second? A second? Are there any other nominations for moderator? Okay, since there are no other nominations, we will now conduct the vote. I need at least five people to come forward and write their choice for moderator on the ballot. Ballot box here. Okay. One of the direction first, please, black and white for votes.
Six votes for John G. Morse.
Six votes for John G. Morse, so John G. Morse has been, I declare, John Morse has been duly elected to serve as moderator for the meeting. John, would you please come and sign the oath? I'm going to swear you in. Do you want to just read this?
I, John G. Morse, fully swear that I support the Constitution of the United States and of this state, as long as I am a genuine citizen there of, so help me God. I swear that I, with this chance, with this my authority, to do as is incumbent on me in the role of moderator, and elected according to the Constitution and laws of the state, so help me God.
Thank you very much.
Before we, can you all give me, before we start, you all should have checked in at the table in the back, got your pink voting card and one ballot, which will be used later on in the meeting. When you hold the ballot up for me to count them, if you hold it this way, you aren't going to get counted. If you hold it that way, I'll see. I guarantee you, there'll be a couple of heroes out there holding them up like that. So don't let me embarrass you by bringing, pointing that out. Please, at this point, if you haven't already, turn off your cell phone. When you wish to speak, please wait for being recognized. Please wait for the microphone to come around to you. We have Oskind Caldo and Alex Sinclair are nice enough to bring their microphones around to you tonight. When you wish to speak, please state your name and town and city so that we have some idea about where you're coming from, if we're having an argument about something. Also, hold the microphone up to your mouth, don't be afraid of it. If you hold it down here, and all of our hearing will look up. Please stick to the subject of the article. I go by the rules in the main municipal moderator town meeting rules. They're essentially the same as Ruckus' Rules of Order. We have one rule of order, and that is that we use the KISS principle, keep it simple stupid. I'm the stupid one, therefore I only allow one amendment to an article at a time on the floor, so we don't all get confused. If you have a question about the vote, on account of the vote, raise your hand and say point of order. I doubt the vote. You will vote another way, I'll recount it, I'll get other people to help count it so that we get it right. The thing, I'm here to help you make your decisions and get the meeting done with, in an economical manner. And if I don't remember your name, I apologize, but you know, senior moments happen, so. So, Article 2 is to see what some regional school unit will be authorized to expend for regular instruction. The recommended amount is $10,570,229. We have a motion on Article 2.
I approve the article as written.
A second?
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion?
Yes. This cost center is up $479,095 for last year's total of $10,91,134. The increase is due mainly to the rise in salaries and benefits. This is also the first year where main state retirement, excuse me, has been added to the local budget for a total of $354,000. The bulk of this $354,000 is located in this cost center. Prepaid has also seen an increase of $75,000 with the addition of a new location in Pittsburgh and 13 new slots. Reorganization of staff has helped accomplish the reduction of the health teacher at Bath Middle School and Woolwich Central School. Tuition amounts for students attending other schools are decreasing by nearly $28,000 as grandparents still are struggling.
Any other discussion? Questions? Guests, raise the mic please.
Steve went through this path. Could you just give a, or someone give a quick rundown of what the different categories are, regular instruction, special ed, career, technical, other, I understand some are almost self-explanatory, but it would be good to hear your official presentation.
Sure, I can start with that and I may turn this over to Ruth Moore if she has a microphone. Again, these, the way that these categories are set up are mandated by the state of Maine. The district does not determine how we categorize our finances or the way that this procedure happens. It's all dictated by the state and I would agree with you, at times it's difficult to understand what makes up that cost center. We can either go through these individual cost centers now and discuss what's in each of them, or as we approach each cost center, we can talk a little bit more in detail about those cost centers.
I can just make brief, very brief comments.
Okay.
If you understand what it means, part of it.
Sure. I'm going to turn this over to either Superintendent of Schools or Ruth Moore.
For this, I'll stick to this specific one. The regular instruction includes all of our cost centers, with the exception of the vocational school. In that plan, Eva, that includes salaries and benefits of our staff at those schools, also supplies, equipment, that includes PSL, English as a second language, if you're in town, it also includes money for field trips, tuition for secondary and elementary, our preschool, which we just mentioned, our prepaid program at all of our sites. So that is what is accomplished by the regular instruction.
Ms. David, mic please.
This is on page in the booklet that's in the box back there. You find the right page, there's numbers on them.
Tim, you mentioned about the retirement system. How much pension?
Light on. Light on.
Probably better. Can you get him?
Hold it up close.
Can you get him up close? Anyhow, let's work this way. Did you mention that the main state teacher retirement fund is included with this money?
Yes, we have budgeted, we have budgeted for that.
How much was that, Tim?
It was $354,000.
Has that been passed in the GOSCO?
Not that I'm aware of, not yet. Different districts have handled it different ways. Some districts have ignored it. We have chosen to budget it and I'll turn that over to Patrick to let him explain that in more detail.
So my question would be to you all asked, what happens to that money if a GOSCO does not pass it?
I'll answer the first one. David, just this morning, we consulted with our attorney just to ask whether, you know, to keep asking the question whether it's smart to keep this money into our budget and we were advised to keep it in, it's risky if we take it out. Ruthie, I don't know if you want to speak to the subsidy part of it?
Yes, I'm keeping it in and if we don't spend it, obviously the bottom line, we showed that, left at the end of the year, but we also, if we don't spend it, we also will not be receiving that from the state. Right now it's nearly awash. We budget it and then they're passing that money along to us in subsidy. So the subsidy on the revenue page that's in this budget includes $354,000 that they're funding for us.
So, does West Bath in this case get any credit for the subsidy?
No.
Thank you. So if we don't spend this money, we haven't been able to raise this $354,000, it will go back into next year's budget, it will not be spent?
We won't receive it either. So you won't spend it, but you won't receive it in subsidy either.
I just want to make sure it's not that. Thank you.
Any other question?
This is actually a somewhat serious question, it's two parts. What percentage of RSU One students are above average?
I think if you're asking the question you want to define what above average is, will you ask to tell you? I'm willing to let the Board use whatever standards they use. I'm sure they're always trying to apply standards and see where the schools and the students stand, so let them answer with their standard as they specify.
I'd be happy to answer that question, but again, with regards to the budget of this particular article, I don't necessarily see the bearing on it.
The question, your opinion is to how effective the school is and that may look like on the funding and whether the school should be funded more or less of a percent?
Again, I think-
You already have the budget, number is already put here, has been determined for the year, so that you end up being able to change that unless you make an amendment to the articles to change the budget. Which we are, who are we?
Yeah, again, you're getting, getting from me, and I'm not going to speak for all Board members, but you're asking if I think our students are exceptional. The work that the Board does, we don't necessarily see what goes on in the schools on a day-to-day basis and I don't want to speak to one category of student over another category of student. With regard to your comment about raising money for the school, there are multiple schools in the district, so how one school performs may be different from how another school performs and my impression of that performance could be vastly different from the other members here in the Board, so I'm just, I'm not sure what bearing that has on this particular article.
I explained the bearing, because in part, the question was to see how you would respond. I would hope that you would have had a good handle on that one and I see that the question is going to have to pass and for you, you hold it. He tried that the second question was, what percentage of RSU One teachers are above average? And try to keep going with that on that one as well.
Okay, again, I'll talk to this point, only because it's a personal point for me. As Board Chair and having been Chairman of the Board for a couple of years, if you look at the goals, not just for this year, but for years previous, one of our primary goals has been about accountability within this district. Accountability from the students, accountability from the staff, and accountability from the administration. So when you ask us questions about how our students are performing, I could quote you all kinds of data and I don't know it off the top of my head, but I have capable people around me that can provide me with the data that would tell you from a standardized testing standpoint, from an athletics standpoint, from a graduation rate standpoint, from an SAT standpoint, how successful our students are, whether that applies to their exceptional nature or non-exceptional nature. I can't really address that, sort of an arbitrary question. And again, with our staff, we have systems in place where we review our staff on a regular basis. Those reviews are done by the administration and our superintendent and then assistant superintendent review those reviews. Whether we, you asked me the question about whether our staff is exceptional or how well they perform, I can't speak to every individual staff member, but I can tell you certainly that in this district, we have systems in place and continue to work in that direction to hold everyone accountable, staff, students, administration. Does that answer your question?
Of course it doesn't answer the question, but I thank you for attempting to reply. I do hope the Board does have a footy on you. Thank you. Any other discussion or questions about Article 2? If not, we have a motion and a second to pass Article 2 for the recommended amount of $10,570,229. All those in favor will lift the cards. Opposed? The article passes for the recommended amount. Article 3, to see what some regional school unit will be authorized to spend for special education. The recommended amount is $4,615,522. We have a motion on Article 3. I approve the motion and the article as written. A second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? The increase of $964,895 in this cost center over the last year's total of $3,650,627 reflects the change in salaries and benefits for teachers and educational technicians, again with the main retirement, main state retirement accounting for a large part of the increase. The cost center has two new educational technicians added to help you address needs at North High and at West Bath and also includes a new life skills program at the Woolwich Central School. We also see an increase in special education tuition rates and fees for next year. Any questions? Ms. David?
Good work this time?
Yeah. It's cynical, but always, sorry about that.
All right, same question. What is the retirement cost of this line, what do I want?
Say that again, David.
What is the state teachers retirement cost on this line? You said the main state retirement is involved in this? How much?
Is it that $354,000 is all categories? In the first, Article 2, there was approximately $216,000 worth of main state retirement and there's some retirement in probably three, four. But in this, I don't know the exact figure in this, but it's mostly salaries and benefits in this cost center.
So the $354,000 is a total quality, not just Article 1?
On the entire budget, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other question? Yes?
Charlie here from Woolwich. That 26% increase certainly grabs your attention, my attention please. Two questions related to that. One would be, I would assume that out of district placements still, in special education still take up quite a bit of funding, they're expensive. One person could be $450,000, you say. My question is how much that 26% might be an increase in that side of things? And the second part is, is the administration and the Board very concerned about keeping placements in district as much as possible? Because we all know that is can be affected and that's state money.
I'm going to defer that question to Sharon Brown. Sharon is our Director of Special Education. Just Charlie, to answer the second part of your question though, we are concerned about that, we are trying to have as much in-house placement as possible and it varies from a year-to-year basis. At times we have children come into the district that we don't have the resources or facilities to address it and end up having to do outplacement. Next year, we're looking at a situation where we are in fact to create a new program because there isn't a program outside the district that will support some of the students we have. So it's year-to-year issue, but I think Sharon can better address that 26% increase that we're seeing next year over this current year.
I'll try, I'll try too. The 26% increase is large, there's no doubt about it and as, as the Board mentioned, part of that, a good part of that is salaries and benefits for staff. The other part that would get your attention is that both our tuition rates and day treatment rates have gone up, those are two different rates. And this year we have to factor those costs separately and it certainly looks like those lines are on their way up. Absolutely, we do monitor who's out of district because our intent is always, if they're out of district, to break them all as soon as possible and not to set them out at all if we can avoid that. So we keep really close tabs on, on those placements and sometimes we try lots of other interventions before we go there. But as Tim pointed out, you can't predict that from year to year. And just, just very recently, I spoke with one of our principals and we have a student coming in to kindergarten that will be very high needs and I just found that out a few days ago. So I'm sorry, I can't be really, really exact about all of that, but it's like, it's kind of like nail and gel on a pebble. It's hard to make it, take form.
Any other questions?
Can you give me an explanation of why pension costs were raised, Dr.? If you said that was part of the reason for the increase?
I'm sorry, could you ask that again?
Could you explain why pension costs were increased? I was, my explanation-
Hey, what I can tell you is that pension costs have an increase, but what has happened is in the past, the state has absorbed or covered the cost for main state retirement. The state is now deferring some of those costs to the local municipalities. So we're now deferring some of those costs that in the past, the state had been obligated to.
Any other questions? Yes? Yes.
Don Dever, I'm from that. Can you break down a little bit more precisely for me the increase in the administration line, in going from $154,000 to $617,000? Is that a share in another line, or is that, it's a larger increase also?
I'm going to get a really good salary increase, David. And you're okay with that, right? Yeah. This is part of what, how the state has redefined how we break out what we call day treatment lines for out-of-district placements and tuition lines. And according to the state's new guidelines, we have to place the day treatment lines under category of these groups. So, it surely does look like we have answered that a good deal. In fact, those costs have been incorporated elsewhere before, but it's sort of a new line.
More questions? Carol.
Carol Eastwood, Pittsburgh. I was just wondering about the Life Skills Program.
The Life Skills Program is actually going to be a program for students from any school, if they're in the right grades. And initially, for this initial program, we are anticipating that will probably be grades four through six. And a Life Skills Program is for students who have some very significant developmental delays, and especially as they go up in grade spans, you see the distance between the student and their peers grow significantly. And so, we really have to build a program that focuses on things that, for other children, just take the granted that they're going to develop very typically, and they sort of take the course of life prior, what we call life skills. But it's actually how to function in the world, and how to interact with other people, and how to practice. All those things that you think, actually, you don't have to teach, but you have to teach students like this. So, we actually, we have a Life Skills Program at the high school, 9 through 12. We need one in the elementary. I would like to make that three through five, and I would like the next addition, as we can make that happen in future years, to be a middle school Life Skills Program. Because we have clusters of students now at all of those grade levels, so it will become incumbent on us so that we don't have to send them to other districts that I can't control.
Do I ask any more questions?
Any other questions? Yes, and back, way, way back.
My name's Elizabeth, and I'd ask for a matter. Can you tell me approximately how many students in special ed there was last year versus this coming year?
Sharon?
Our special ed population has actually stayed very, very consistent. Last year, using a mid-year count, we have about 342 identified students. And counting them this year, at about the same time of year, to the 336. I think our percentage of the entire district is down by 0.4%. Last year, I believe it was 15.2, and this year, it's 14.8. Does that answer that question?
Okay, so, in other words, you're hiring more people for the same amount of students?
We are. That's right, we are. We're increasing our attached staff by two, or we're proposing to do that, and we will add a teaching position to be able to implement that Life Skills Program.
Okay, thank you.
And another question, I'm back.
Probably here towards Sharon. So, in hiring those individuals on, is that allowing the district to pull the kids back in, that more placed out there? There's a significant instance of that as well. Yes.
Any other questions? If not, we have a motion and a second to pass Article 3 for the recommended amount of $4,615,522. All in favor of that motion, put your hand up. Opposed? It passes for the recommended amount. Article 4, see what some regional school units will be authorized to spend for career and technical education. The recommended amount is $1,251,013.
I move the article as written.
Second?
Second.
Speak on that.
Sure. This cost center is up by $6,993 for last year's total of $1,244. The increase is the change in salaries and benefits, which includes the addition of main state retirement. We will also see the elimination of the second culinary arts position as this is going to be rolled. Just to answer some previous questions, again, when I mentioned the main state retirement, that's included in that $354,000 that we talked about in Article 2. And the other thing is, this article specifically deals with our career and technical center. Some of you may know it as the VOG Center. So, it addresses all the costs of any career or technical center or vocational instruction.
Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 4 for the recommended amount? Opposed? It passes for the recommended amount. Article 5, see what some regional school units will be authorized to spend for other construction. Recommended amount is $512,784. We have a motion on Article 5.
I move the article as written.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
This article, which covers the cost of co-curricular and athletic programs, is up by $13,514 from last year's total of $499,270. The shift in audit costs from the budget to the back middle school budget accounts for much of the increase. An additional coach has been added to the boys lacrosse team, due to increasing participation. The other large increase is the cost of transportation for the sports program.
Questions about Article 5? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 5 for the recommended amount? Opposed? It passes. Article 6, see what some regional school unit will be authorized to spend for student and staff support. Recommended amount is $2,388,722. Who is speaking for Article 6?
I move the article as written. Sacka?
Sacka.
Four. This cost center is up $159,924 for last year's total of $2,228,798. Technology has increased due to additional contracted fees and new equipment leases. Salaries and benefits also account for much of the increase. This particular article is made up of items like computer labs, technology, library, health services, guidance, student assessment, and any licenses or fees, subscriptions that you may have in the district. May have the bulk of that portion.
If not, all those in favor of Article 6? Six, the recommended amount is $2,388,722. Opposed? It passes for the recommended amount. Article 7, see what some regional school unit will be authorized to spend for system administration. Recommended amount is $573,742. Who's going to make a motion on Article 7?
I move that.
You have a second?
Second.
This cost center is up... Please, hold my microphone closer. This cost center is up $7,630 over last year's total of $566,110. Increased costs for such things as legal fees, audits, supplies, meetings, contracts account for the rise in expense.
Any questions?
The speaker's holding microphone.
This cost center is up $7,630 over last year's total of $566,110. Increased costs for such things as legal fees, audits, supplies, and meetings, contracts account for the rise in expense.
If there are no questions, all those in favor of Article 7? Opposed? It passes for the recommended amount. Article 8, see what some regional school unit will be authorized to spend for school administration. Recommended amount is $1,565,427. We have a motion on Article 8. I move the article as written. Okay, you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Or any questions? This cost center is up $96,051 over last year's total of $1,469,376. The main reason is the increases in salaries and benefits for the principals, assistant principals, and secretaries at each school. Any questions? If not, all those in favor of Article 8? Opposed? It passes for the recommended amount. Article 9, see what some regional school unit will be authorized to spend for transportation. Recommended amount is $1,174,630. We have a motion on Article 9?
I move the article as written.
Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Article 9?
This cost center is up $142,006 over last year's total of $1,032,624. The total reflects the increased cost of the new spring year contract, the bus, back, bus service, increased cost for gas, diesel, and the increased cost to transport our special education students to out-of-district placement.
Any questions about Article 9? If not, all in favor? Opposed? It passes for the recommended amount. Article 10, see what some regional school unit will be authorized to spend for facility maintenance. Recommended amount is $3,135,186. We have a motion on Article 10.
I think the article has written.
Okay. You have a second?
Second.
I'll speak to the article, Phil.
This cost center is down $71,597 from last year's total of $3,206,783. A considerable savings was realized with a two-year bid on heating oil at a cost of $2.89 per gallon. There's a savings of $20,885 for non-state funded debt service, which is included in this cost.
Any questions? Yes, Paul. Mike?
Baba from Pittsburgh. Could you describe in some specifics, what are the renovations and improvements in the schools? These are pretty old schools, and, well, maybe some of the future plans of that would be?
What I can tell you is, some of you may or may not be aware, we have recently, very recently, as of April, concluded two facility studies within the district. One facility study was on the elementary schools in the district, and that was done by Herrmann Associates. There are copies of that on our website. You can take a look at it. It talks not only about the condition of the facilities, but also who's did job the facilities. The second study that we had done, sort of was a pre-study, in an effort to keep the cost down, was an evaluation of the Morris High School facility. The board has just recently seen that, and we really haven't had a chance to act on it, although I think that's going to be a priority going into next year. Now, to answer your question. Questions about what we have scheduled in this budget for the next year? I'm going to turn that over to Dave Richards. The one thing I can say is that Dave Richards is our facilities director. He has one time, one full-time employee that works under him for all the facilities that we have. And I, if I were to count and say a number, I'd call you wrong, but I guess somewhere between seven and nine. Anyway, in this budget, we have budgeted for an additional person to assist Dave in rostering. Dave, I want you to speak to some of the projects that are involved in this budget.
This year's actually the first year without anything crazy, like building new schools, ten new schools, moving one school to another school. It's going to be actually a normal school summer for us, a prepared party. Now, as I said, I have one guy, 483,000 square feet of buildings in four halves, four halves. So, he's always working. As far as improvements, one of them, building my building. Here we go. Pittsburgh, new phone system. They have a 1953 push-button controls to announce a new room. Bleacher's Middle School, this size is going to be replaced this year, that size is replaced next year. These are original, 1963. You get 30 years out of them. You do the math, you're going to be 50 this year. We have a choice to either put the handrails on them, or get them condemned in two years, so we chose to do this, luckily. Morris High School, that's just a long list. I don't even want to start that one. Let's see. Diagonal, plumbing. We've got very old plumbing systems over there. We have to use, we just did a section out back for boiler systems, which is another aging thing. Boilers were in 1980. And again, you do the math, they're about the end there. So, we got some high-end sections to replace there. Fisher Mitchell was saying. What else have they done? West Bath, we're in pretty good shape out there. That's just going to be a normal summer cleaning, normal, you know, patching here in the main block. Projects as well. Anything else? Anything in particular? What about? Back there?
Not here.
No?
For the water.
Yes, probably here in the middle area. Put your hand up, so they can see you.
I know that it's not available to all schools right now. Are there plans or thoughts about going to natural gas to save money on fuel in the future?
Great question. Right now, I'm going to have two candidates that would then qualify for. That would be Fisher Mitchell, because he's already been on...
That would be Fisher Mitchell, because he's already been across the street at the high school. It's not possible for us right now because Fisher Mitchell has a barrier, 8,000 gallon tank. The other place would be a potential customer would be this building here. But again, you have to dig up and dispose of the 8,000 gallon tank. So you pay that is something you want to do. We're going to do a district-wide, say we're going to replace all the boiler control systems. Again, it's not just a simple switchboard. You have to replace the control systems. And a lot of these schools have set up dual, like Fisher Mitchell, for example. You have steam on the original side, hot water on the other side. So to build a project like that, we want to cover the entire school with the one system. So the cost of natural gas compared to the $2.89 we're paying for fuel for the next two years, you took it and paid that for seven years. Love to do it though.
That's David Eckro.
You spoke a lot to review some of all the schools, our children's schools. Were those surveys impacted on the positive and negative schools?
The first study that was done by Herrmann, those were some options within that study in terms of, you know, areas where we could save dollars or they did discuss some level of consolidation.
What was the board's, or what is the board's feeling about that in all of the schools?
Currently, right now, the report is in with the facilities committee. And I'll just say this, the Herrmann report made a number of different recommendations. Some of those recommendations included the closure of some schools, some did not. The facilities committee has been debating that and the board's, you know, awaiting them to make a recommendation to the full board. So we haven't heard anything yet from the facilities committee.
I'm just surprised that the board's in the head of the office, these surveys are not.
I'll turn this over to the superintendent. It has been discussed during our board meetings and our board meetings are on the website now.
I would use the word options instead of recommendations. We pay Herrmann to do that elementary reconfiguration study, whatever term you want to use. But, you know, I certainly understand, because I've been through it before, that any time you look at reconfiguring schools or the possibility of closing a school, I mean, that's a long process. At the same time, the facilities committee, the board and myself would want to go out to all of our schools and to the community and give people, present these options to people and go through a process to hear people's concerns, questions that they may have. And the process of eventually closing a school is a lengthy, can be a lengthy process. We certainly understand it's an emotional one, but we need, from a financial point of view and an efficiency standpoint, at least be able to explore and look at how can we be more efficient in school systems. So we're nowhere near ready and I would be disappointed, publish it says this, but I would be disappointed if the board or the facilities committee just looked at that study and said, this is our recommendation. I mean, we need to go through a fairly comprehensive process discussion with community members in all of our committees.
Thank you.
Ready to answer questions? Yes, Paul.
Given the relatively small amount of money in this budget and the obvious large needs of our facilities, what would be the expectation of the board to the facilities committee in terms of timing to make some of the decisions and get the work underway?
Which specific work are you referring to? Work that might be designated coming out of those two reports or?
Yes. The two of the boards.
Yeah. Our hope was to, at least from a board standpoint, to stay on top of it, fast-track it as much as possible, but also something that Patrick alluded to and I reflected, is that any time we have discussions about major changes within the district or major changes to a facility, we want to try and front-end it with as much participation from all the stakeholders as possible. So those processes, as much as you'd like to move along quickly, tend to take a while because a lot of people have a stake, have an interest in it. So any changes, any changes that we went to to the facilities, more specifically Morris, is going to involve, you know, public discussion, a number of public meetings, a lot of public input, but it is a priority for the board that we stay on task with that. It's not something that come off, go reflect it and come off again in the spring. At this point, we wanted to improve the process, get to the end of the school year, and then that was going to be a primary focus.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, we have a motion and a second to pass Article 10 for the recommended amount. All those in favor? Opposed? Passes for the recommended amount. Article 11, see what some regional school unit would be authorized to expand for debt service. Recommended amount is $1,812,659. Who's making a motion on Article 11?
I move as article as written.
You have a second?
Second.
This cost center is down $50,296 from last year's total of $1,862,955 and is reflective of increasing interest costs on bonds.
Any questions about Article 11? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? Passes for the recommended amount. Article 12, see what some regional school unit would be authorized to expand for other food service transfer. Recommend $60,000. Speaking to Article 12.
I move the article as written.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? This cost center is down $15,000 from last year's total of $75,000. With the increased cost of student loans and strict wiring of expenses, we hope to be able to manage with the decrease in requests. Any questions? If not, all in favor? Opposed? Passes for the recommended amount. Article 13. Shall a regional school unit appropriate $23,934,339 for the total cost of funding public education from pre-kindergarten to grade 12 as described in the Essential Programs and Services Funding Act? And shall the district raise and assess the following amounts as each municipality's contribution to the total cost of funding public education from pre-kindergarten to grade 12? And do you have the amounts of each of the towns on the sheet in front of you? So we have a motion on Article 13.
I move the article as written.
You have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Do we have any questions about Article 13? Any discussion or explanation?
This article raises the largest portion of the proposed budget. The state has determined that the RSU can operate on a budget of $23,934,339, which is an EPS calculation. Has determined each municipality's share of appropriation based on enrollment. The state has further determined that the RSU should be able to raise $15,471,673 of the total $23,934,339. Well, if the RSU does raise the $15,471,673, the state will contribute as subsequent to the amount of $8,462,666 and bring the total to $23,934,339.
Any questions? Everybody wants to eat it in that can or a foodie. I don't blame you. If there are no questions, all those in favor of Article 13 as printed? Opposed? Passes for the as printed. Article 14, to see what some regional school unit would raise appropriate annual payments on debt service previously approved by the legislative body for non-state funded school construction projects. Non-state funded portions of school construction projects and minor capital projects in addition to the funds appropriated as the local share of the school administrative unit's contribution to the total cost of funding public education from pre-kindergarten to grade 12. Recommended amount is $772,521. You have a motion on Article 14.
I move the article as written.
You have a second?
Second.
Is there some explanation? Non-state funded debt service is the amount of money needed for the annual payment on a regional school unit's long-term debt for major capital school construction projects and minor capital renovation projects that is not approved or state subsidy. The bonding of this long-term debt previously approved by the voters or other legislative body. Any questions? If not, all those in favor of Article 14 for the recommended amount? Opposed? Article 14 passes. Okay. Article 15. To see what some regional school unit would raise appropriate, recommended amount is $2246,540 in addition, in additional local funds, which exceeds the state's essential program and services allocation model by $1,748,760 as required to fund the budget recommended by the regional school unit board of directors. The board of directors recommends $2246,540 for additional local funds and gives the following reasons for exceeding the state's essential program and services funding model by $1,748,760. The additional local funds represent local costs to support the regional schools and programs that are not included in the state's funding laws, including costs for co-curricular and extracurricular activities, transportation, and special education services. The board of directors recommends a yes vote. We have a motion on Article 15.
I move the article as written.
You have a second?
Second.
Okay. This is required to be voted on by written ballot. So is there any, do you wish to make any explanation before we vote? Or is there any question before we vote?
There's no real explanation for this. To try and clarify it, these are the dollars that we're raising over and above what the state says that we can run our district on. The majority of districts around the state cannot operate based on what the state says that they can operate. So any dollars that we raise in addition to what the state says that we can raise funds, run the school on, this is what we're talking about. These dollars are included in many of the articles that we've already voted on. We're just acknowledging that you're going to raise locally X amount of dollars over and above the state minimum of what requires us to run our schools this year.
Okay, are there any questions? All right. We have three ballot boxes down here. They've just been inspected to see that nobody is preloading them. And your clerk's down here. You put your text in, you've got your white ballot with a yes or no on it. Mark it the way you desire. Do not fold it. Do not fold it because without taking one time to unfold that, whatever. And you may come forward and put it in whichever box you wish. Everybody voted with whis' the ball. Last call, calls with the ball. Okay, anyone? All right, hold, I close. The clerk will count the ballots. We can be made at ease without we get to count. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, the results of Article fifteen are one hundred fifteen yes, thirteen no. So Article fifteen passes. Article sixteen. See what some the regional school unit will authorize the school committee to expend for fiscal year beginning July one, two thousand thirteen, and ending June thirty, two thousand fourteen from the school administrative unit's contribution to the total cost of funding public education from pre-kindergarten to grade twelve as described in the Essential Programs and Services Funding Act. Non-state funded construction projects, additional local funds for school purposes under the main revised statutes twenty dash A, section one, five, six, nine, zero, unspent balances, course receipts, state subsidy, and other receipts for the support of school. Recommended amount, twenty-seven million six hundred fifty-nine thousand nine hundred fourteen dollars. We have a motion on Article sixteen.
I move the article as written.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Thank you. Anybody that's an English teacher out there who ever wrote this, you can throw the book at us. And if you're really good, I want to see a diagram and all the plates. They don't do that nowadays. They used to when I was in school. Is there any explanation or comment on Article sixteen before we have a question?
This amount is the total of Articles two through twelve, which is referred to as the general fund for the RSU. Adult education's capital reserves are a big part and are therefore raised in the next two articles.
Any questions? If not, all those in favor of Article sixteen? Oppose? Passes for the recommended amount. Article seventeen, to see if the regional school unit will appropriate one hundred ninety-eight thousand two hundred seventy-two dollars for health education and raise sixty-three thousand eight hundred dollars as the local share with authorization to expend any additional incidental or miscellaneous receipts in the interest and for the well-being being of the adult education program. Recommended amount is sixty-three thousand eight hundred dollars. We have a motion on Article seventeen. Recommend approval as written. Second?
A second.
Okay. Any explanation?
Adult education serves over two hundred and fifty people. This authorized us to appropriate one hundred ninety-eight thousand two hundred seventy-two dollars for the program. Our share is sixty-three thousand eight hundred for local share. The rest comes from subsidy and tuitions. So we'll bring in approximately two hundred and fifty dollars per person.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions on Article seventeen? Yes, Paul?
I'm just interested, uh, what do they typically study?
I'm going to defer this question to Cam Booty, our director of adult education.
The two hundred and fifty people that you just mentioned is for academics, GEDs, completion, and college transitions. There are an additional seven hundred people who are working towards certificate programs, for instance, CNA, CRNA, BOD, EKB, Certified Medical Assistance, and a lot of others. And as well as some people in regional classes and lots of other things. These certifications go along.
Any other questions? If not, all those in favor of Article seventeen? Vote? It passes for the recommended amount. Article eighteen, capital reserve funds. So the board of directors be authorized to raise twenty-five thousand dollars for the previously established capital reserve fund and be authorized to expend the funds if necessary. Board of directors recommends a yes vote. We have a motion on Article eighteen.
Move if the motion be accepted as written.
A second?
A second.
Okay, any explanation?
Each year we recommend that we allocate approximately twenty-five thousand dollars to go into this fund to take care of any emergencies that might exist. It's two hundred and twenty-five thousand on every file.
Okay, any questions about Article eighteen? If not, all in favor? Vote? Passes for the yes vote. Article nineteen, in addition to the amount in Article sixteen, shall the voters authorize the board of directors to accept and expend any state, federal, and other grants and receipts during the fiscal year beginning July one, two thousand thirteen, and ending June thirty, two thousand fourteen for school purposes, providing that such grants, aid, and receipts do not require expenditures of local funds not previously appropriated. The board of directors recommends a yes vote. We have a motion on Article nineteen.
I move the article as written.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Is there an explanation?
This article authorizes the RSU to seek other sources of funding, such as state, federal, and private grants, to support education and expend, and expend them during this fiscal year.
Any questions about Article nineteen? Not, yes.
My question really is in reference to Article sixteen, which I really don't understand. Because here we're spending twenty-seven million seven hundred thousand dollars that we could be in a previous article, fourteen. Article thirteen is including twenty-four million. Then we supplemented it with another million and two. The numbers don't, the numbers don't add up.
Article sixteen, which is the twenty-seven million. That is the total, the authorization to expend that total amount of money. And you raised the money for that in these previous articles, the revenue articles, which were thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen. But this is the total expenditures authorized to the RSU.
Are we going twice then?
This number nineteen is the authorizing them to spend above and beyond that if they get grants or receipt. As of right now, they're only authorized to spend up at twenty-seven thousand. Twenty-seven million six fifty-nine.
Well, if you say so, but I still don't see why the twenty-seven million six hundred and fifty-nine thousand came down.
After me, you can sit down with Ruthie or somebody like that will explain the pieces that make it up. Okay, any other questions for Article nineteen? If not, all those in favor, raise your hand. Oppose? It passes. Before we, uh, adjourn the meeting, I'd like to say thank you to, uh, to fellows who put the mics around for us. I would also remind you, I would also remind you that if you were in favor of the budget tonight, you need to go next Tuesday and vote. Paper ballot on budget. So, because there may be people who weren't here tonight who did want to come out and say they weren't in favor, that will come out and vote otherwise. So if you want to, you have to go and support it next Tuesday. So I would, uh, at this point in time, I would anticipate a motion to adjourn the call.
While we have everybody here, I wonder if the board would like to give us their preference on question two that's going to be on the ballot?
Next Tuesday.
Anybody else from the board want to speak on this one? You know, it's, it's a, it's a personal, it's really a personal preference. I think that from a municipal standpoint, there's a cost associated with this two-part validation process. And frankly, I'd like to see more people turn up to this meeting and ask more questions about specific points within the budget than just given the option of either I'm for it or I'm against it. This is, it tends to be confusing in each year as the board has dealt with it and tried to address the act at the time, make it a little bit more understandable. But it's a lot more understandable here than it's going to be at the ballot. So I guess from my standpoint, um, single validation process would be, uh, cheaper to the district, cheaper to the municipalities. Um, and also it might give us a little bit more dialogue about the nuts and bolts that make up this budget, aside from the three or four workshops we've held prior. I guess it, well, I can't tell you what I'm going to do in the ballot. Anybody else from the board want to speak to that though?
In the back row, we have questions? Or a comment?
Question, Sibley, um, back. The question is if we take one of these two venues for approving the budget, which one will it be? The ballot or this one here?
Next week's written ballot would not happen if you vote no on next time. This being here is always going to be here.
Okay, so it would be the ballot that would be counted.
Yes.
Um, do we know how much it costs to do validation, Dr. Patrick? How much it costs to miss how these schools?
I can defer that either to Ruth or Patrick. I know it varies from municipality to municipality. I'm going to turn that over to Patrick.
We've mentioned eight thousand dollars for a referendum, but, um, not all towns, um, bill us. Um, so it's been running maybe around five thousand dollars. Um, this next one may be a little bit more expensive for us because we're the only ones that are having the referendum. We're not sharing the cost with the towns. Um, so, you know, it could range from five to eight thousand. And that, that question comes on to the ballot every three years by say one. And if, if someone has, um, a problem within that three years, I believe there's a way to petition that it get put on the ballot sooner or happen sooner if, if they don't feel that that kind of validation needs to be done.
Yes, we have called it.
If it was a single validation, um, process, would there be a minimum for each town within the RSU? A minimum number of votes or, but is it just whoever comes to this meeting? If a town, you know, just tells a few that that's enough? Is there, is there actually legal?
I believe not. I think if there were, if there were six people here tonight, nobody else showed up, they're the ones that set the budget. That's the way it is. If you don't, if you don't show up, you don't participate. Any other questions? Yes? Back row.
I can be loud. Um, so if we do vote to not do double validation, does that then mean three years down the line you do another vote again to revisit it? Or does it mean that we are deciding collectively, we're not doing it anymore with the vote? We're just going to do it at the end?
Three years, it would come up again whether or not you wanted to do that. And it would be, one town could vote not to do it, but it would be the total vote of all the RSU towns would be what decides that. All right, now we need a motion to adjourn. Somebody want to vote? A second?
Second.
All in big.
Aye.
Thank you. We're adjourned.